Have a meeting on July 3rd concerning the 911 communications project. And I really am not quite sure everything that's happened, that Tim's hired and what's going on. So, I'm not quite sure who to turn the time over to.
Dawn.
Dawn?
I'm here.
You're local.
Shaw?
Hi.
Here, here, here.
Mike McIntyre?
Here.
So, last week at some point I received copies of documents that showed us where the sites were going to be for the towers. And going around is a copy of the map. And if you look up here, there, it's also up here, because it's a little hard and raining, you really can't see my pin mark. But this one where it's over here, this one is not one that the county is responsible for. You are responsible for this, except it's sixes already built. Okay? So, we're looking at the sites of where the towers were. And I had some concerns just because of who owned the property that they were on. So, one of the things I did was I talked with Jim Pream, who is our Director of County Conservation, because we had three sites selected for what I've been calling the New Virginia Site Tower, which is also known as
Greenfield.
Greenfield One. All of that is conservation land. We cannot put a tower on there. It would not be acceptable to do so. And if we did put it on any one of those three parcels, County Conservation Board would end up paying a great deal of money back to the DNR. And when I mean a great deal of money, I'm saying upwards of about $50,000. So, that's when I thought, well, you better look at all the sites and see where we are on site selection. Have we negotiated with different parties that own the sites or own, in one case, the tower that's already there? So, that's why I started looking into this. And so, what I did was I wrote a memo based on what I learned. And I had great help, I have to say. Everybody was wonderful when I needed more information. Megan and Jim, Doug, and Doug E. Goldson. And Lindsay is here, and Doug is here too. Lindsay's not here. I think she's planning to be here to discuss zoning if we need to, too. So, everybody was very helpful. The other thing we learned was that Mike Lewis from Shy Patrick did not have a clear picture of what was supposed to be going at the Justice Center. And so, we sent him, we being Megan, sent him the information about that, of what was expected to go there. It was a 110-foot monopole tower. I'm gonna let Mike speak to why that really will not work well on that site. We have since looked at another site within the city of Indiegola. And I'm hopeful that we can look at that site and be comfortable with the coverage that it gives for the county and then also for the city of Indiegola. And I believe it improves their coverage
On the east side.
On the east side. So...
So, thank you, if it's kind of my opportunity to just share. So, what I did when I received the first phone call is I pulled a photograph out of our file of what I thought the conversation was where we last left it.
We're trying to put one on the roof.
Which was putting something on the roof. And the photograph was to communicate an antenna structure on the roof, not a 110-foot monopole. And so, I just shared that picture just to communicate where, what we were thinking. And then was able to verify based on the information that I received that the 110-foot height pole would be a ground-mounted pole. So, generally, I've been trying to think about if it is placed on this site, where it could go. And then I also received a call as a follow-up to discuss if the equipment that went with that pole, could it fit into the physical space of the lower level? So, there's a couple of different conversations going on there for where that equipment could reside. So, in a bit of a working discussion for me, I'm just trying to learn today what those requirements ultimately would play out to be and if we can even accommodate it. I do personally have some reservations about putting a 110-foot tall pole on the square and just how that ultimately plays out, both technically and visually. The logical corner, and I have a drawing here for the people in the room, if it were to happen here, would be over by the emergency generator structure, because that's the location of where the IT room on the lower level is located. And that's right in the front corner of the building. So, you know, there's a possibility to accommodate it there, but it's very complex, I guess I would say. So, if there are other potential sites in downtown that we could locate this on, or in proximity we could locate this tower on, then I would, you know, there's probably a couple of different ways to work through how to connect this building to it. In Jasper County, we had a similar issue where they didn't want the pole to be located on the square in Newton. And so, it was located about a block away, and a fiber optics line was put in between the two to communicate and connect. In their case, another project that we did similarly, there was still the antenna structure on the roof, and a microwave dish was put on the roof to be able to communicate between the two locations. So, I guess just a couple of options, just to kind of start out there. But I would say that, you know, that corner being the most logical would be really difficult. And then if we moved it over to the opposite side of the building, if it were to happen here, maybe still not visually desirable. But if it were to happen, then we'd have to create a pathway to get back to the, to that corner. So, there's some complexity there, too. Just, just a starting point thought. No, that's not ultimately a direction at this point.
And I have Tim called in because this affects the RFP for the Civs. If we change the scope on what is going to go onto the courthouse lawn, if we move it off-site, there will then need to be a structure, a generator, all of that. So, the RFP changes. So, Tim really needs direction from the board on how to proceed with an RFP. If they wanted to try and incorporate it into the courthouse and housing the equipment within the Justice Center, or are you wanting to put it off-site? Because that RFP would then need to include a structure and the site development. So, you could jump in anytime, Tim. Did I explain that right?
You did.
Okay. Tim, what?
Yeah, so, obviously Motorola, even though it wasn't what Doug McCaslin had asked for, we had asked for a rooftop structure. But then, at the time, I was thinking the Justice Center had a cupola, some type of structure on it that, you know, that we were gonna be hiding behind, maybe a little bit. Anyway, so Motorola, even after that, Motorola came back with a 110-foot monopole, which is to be ground-mounted. So...
And Tim, Mike Lewis, again, just to clarify, the height of the building is roughly 55 feet. So, if something were to be placed on the building, other than a monopole, we'd be trying to deal with something on the building that is roughly another 55 feet in height?
That's right. And with Mike's perspective, those pictures that Megan sent me to have a small, lightweight lattice-type tower attached to a wall and running up, yeah, that, I would think that the tower we need is probably a little heavier than what is shown there. But nonetheless, you know, if we could get it, if you say the rooftop that's attached to is 50 feet above ground level, then we could, you know, another 50 or 60 feet above that, if that's possible, or something close to that, with something probably a little more structurally rugged than what you showed in that antenna. And it could be a lattice-like tower like you had in there, that was attached to.
Understand. But, yeah, and then structurally, if we, if there is a direction to do that, I'd have to go back and figure out structurally what it would take to accommodate that. A taller, more substantial element.
Yeah, it could be a little bit bigger. So, you have the whole setup. It's gonna have two transmit and receive, and a receiving tower and a microwave dish attached to it. The microwave dish could be optional. We have a lot of fiber connectivity. But having a microwave dish would also allow redundant connectivity and make it less likely the county would ever be out of contact or connected to the core, which is for the state, I guess, would be up in Des Moines somewhere, or was Des Moines. So, but yeah, that's what we're willing to assume, whether you can work that into it or not. And also having the equipment room sized appropriately, because we're gonna have a transmit site there, not only in addition to the console equipment and dispatch, all the backroom stuff, which would be the servers for the county CAD and the 911 switch, and the transmit site for the P-25 system, and some other associated equipment in there. So, something on the order of 12 by 16 or bigger, and air conditioning, backup power, et cetera, goes in there.
And I think when we started out, Mike, we were talking that corner, and we had spaced it or made it big enough. I mean, gradually, it's kind of been dwindled down with sprinkler and the
A little bit.
Electrical and...
There's still a room there.
There's still a room there. It's just whether it's sized appropriate for, for the needs. Because I think what we talked about was eight server racks is kind of the basic that we were using.
And let me throw this out for consideration as well. If we had to move this to, let's say, a mile, Doug gave me a site uptown there in Indiegola, that was just to pretend. But if we move to any other location, it's probably gonna have a budget impact of somewhere 450,000 to 500,000. The shelter itself, I think, was 220, and then the compound, and any increase in size of the tower, et cetera. So, and a microwave compact, I'd say roughly 450,000 in budget impact, 450 to 500,000, if we're utilizing the Motorola pricing that they had in their last proposal. So, if that helps with the decision, but that's roughly what we think.
What's ballpark, and I know that we're real preliminary here, but what's the ballpark impact to strengthen the courthouse and put on the 55-foot tower, which I think is what most of us generally assumed was going to happen at the beginning?
Well, for the structure that we sent in the picture, I think our structural engineer feels that the design is sufficient to be able to carry that. And so, that, that's roughly about 30 feet in height. So, we're going to an increase of essentially something double that. So, I can't say, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say ballpark, we're trying to talk in $50,000 for the sake of the conversation.
Fair question. And what, what is the, one, I understand that the specs came back as a mono tower rounded, which is not sort of what I think most people envisioned. Because I think most people envisioned a structure, I'm not an engineer, a structure on top of the courthouse with an antenna that links into the basement where we keep our stuff. That's a pretty layman's term, but, our stuff. But I guess if, why are we, why are we moving away from that? Is it because Motorola came back and said we want a tower somewhere?
They're the ones that came back with the monopole, yeah. That was part of their proposal.
Okay.
I think that was just ease of construction. I think it's cheaper for them to put the monopole in the ground. I don't know, or if it's just better grounded. I don't know what their thinking was on that. But they were questioned, and that's what they came up with.
Sure. My general take, and I'll let the other two speak for their own selves, but my general take is I would much prefer to have the structure on the courthouse that goes up another 55 feet than putting a monopole tower either on the courthouse ground somewhere, which I think will aesthetically look not pleasing, or alternatively putting it at the shop site or somewhere else. And we're not gonna, there's no, there's no ground within a block of the courthouse that someone's gonna just pitch to us for
No.
Cheap money. And then we have to microwave it back or relay it back. I mean, that's gonna be a lot of money. And so, I'm gonna lean really hard towards, let's do what we have to do with some change orders to get it on the courthouse that we all sort of originally thought it was gonna be in the first place.
Not, not knowing about the $450,000 number that was thrown out here today, I was thinking that, does this site location have some potential to place it? Because there's an area here. And then, but I would assume that this site would also require a $450,000 cost to get the infrastructure put in. That just, and then, and then connect between the two. But that was just...
So, you're thinking that by building it up on the courthouse, there's still gonna be an additional 450 over?
No.
No, no.
Yeah, I'll be here.
I was just trying to say, the alternative location
Oh, I'll be here, sure.
Would have been here, this location, that we're sitting in today.
I gotcha.
That's what I'm saying. But then, but then the day I heard the $450,000 number, and that's a significant...
And that $450,000 number assumes a complete site like Greenfield out there. So, if there's another site that has an indoor equipment room and generator and some of those other features that we gotta add for a site, then that number is reduced. But that's what I was assuming. It's essentially a Greenfield site in town, and we're putting, putting a smaller tower and equipment building, generator, et cetera, there.
And you could say this site's not a desirable location either. I mean, I get that, right? So, I'm just throwing out the idea. So...
Now, if we can't go on top of the courthouse, our second choice would be out at the county yard. We found a very suitable parcel there that is kind of behind the properties and hidden and along the bike trail for access. I think it would be a lot easier to sell to the public as far as aesthetics. But ideally, I want to go in the courthouse.
Yeah. And I would just say, if you do that, if you go, if you end up building another, having to build another site, I would go with a bigger tower, get more bags of luck if you're gonna do that in terms of coverage. But longer that, as long as you can get it approved, of course. But if you're gonna have to spend 455,000, I would go up higher than 100 feet.
So, again, to reinforce, if it, if we place it on the roof of the new courthouse, Justice Center, you know, we're looking roughly at something that's double the height of what we anticipated. And then I would have, I'd go back to the structural engineer and discuss what it means to implement that.
Means a change order? It's not assumed?
Well, you know, at this juncture, you know, we, as I mentioned, when I first walked into the room, we issued the final addenda to the contractor. And so, we're gonna get a bid back. It would not include whatever this is. And then we'd work on the proposed change of what that is. And then we'd come back and get a price for that, and you'd be able to decide, you know, based on that information, is that still something you wanna do?
That a part of your thoughts?
Well, I, I think I would be in favor of what I understand on this thing of your tower courthouse, on the roof of the courthouse.
Okay. Tim, does that give you what you need on that piece of it for completing that RFP and getting that civil piece out for request?
Yes, I think so. I mean, just as a suggestion, given the, if it sounds like you guys are in favor of seeing this can be put on, on top of the courthouse, I would, if it were me, I would include that, that tower in the bid for the courthouse itself, given they're gonna have to structurally improve those areas where that tower is sitting on and attached to. And it'll be a lot cheaper than probably what we've got at this quote for it. So...
Yeah. And Tim, just, I appreciate that. I understand. Just to reinforce or repeat the conversation, the last addenda prior to the bid went out, is going out today. And so, and the bids are received on July 9th. And so, what we'll have to do to get it into the cost of that project is prepare a supplemental document, get a price for it, and then, and then come back. It'll, it'll all happen before anything gets built here. And we'll, we'll have the opportunity to evaluate together what that price is and what that means.
And that's the structural piece. But the actual tower that needs to go on there would still be included in this RFP?
We could make it all-inclusive of those elements that need to happen, you know? I'm sorry.
You're not gonna, you're not, your change order's not gonna include the actual tower. It's just gonna be completing the building to be structurally sound for a 55-foot tower.
I, I guess, Tim, can you comment on which way you'd like that to be? Just so, you know, is the tower included with the structural modifications we're gonna do? Or should the tower be separate and then, and then that other RFP attaches to the building?
If it were me, I would do, would just do the architectural of the building with the tower. Because Motorola's monopole could just end up being some type of credit that I'm sure they'll find a way to use up on other stuff for the monopole. Since it's not gonna be a monopole, it's not what they proposed anyway. I think financially, they kinda gonna be better off and is less likely, less likelihood of any change orders if it's all wrapped into the contractor's work. Because they'll have the improved facility structurally to hold that tower and anchor it down and all that stuff. It'll just be completely in their hands at that point. Then when Motorola comes in, they'll hang antenna transmission lines, et cetera, and run that down to this. So, it kind of takes the monopole portion out of the Motorola contract, is all it does. But that, that's the way I would prefer it. And I think you'll be better off that way.
Then you're going against your bond.
I'd say there's two different bond issues. There, I've got two different bond issues. The essential county purpose for the bond now is, I believe, as long as we document it and it comes out of the right funding, you could still do it that way. But it would have to be isolated out as far as the invoicing of that piece of it. Because that will need to come out of a different bond than what the Justice Center bond is.
I guess because at this point, you're going to have a document from the contractor that says, here's the separate specific cost for this issue.
If it can be isolated.
You'll be able to isolate that cost and track it. Because the bid will be one thing, and this will be a separate cost.
Right.
So, you'll at least have the ability to say, this is the allocated cost to...
Yeah. I mean, I can see that working, as long as it can be isolated so that it can be applied to the correct bonding, to make sure it stays within those boundaries.
We can work on preparing it that way.
I mean, you could, you could obviously do it either way. If you, Motorola's gonna put an antenna on top of the roof of the, the Justice Center, then they're gonna want the structural engineer to make sure they're not getting in any trouble with this, with this name taking on any liability. Whereas the contractor already know that's covered. So, but that's just
I get that.
That's just my two cents.
Understood.
Brian Vance, as the Chair of the 911 Board, do you have any problems with the changes that would need?
No, I have not. No, I don't. I've been looking over some of the maps that have been provided or elsewhere. The green, what's known as Greenfield One, gives us a little bit better coverage for New Virginia down there. And the only thing about the courthouse is that I don't know if this current structure you're talking about, Doug, is going, did you give much less coverage than what we were looking at for the proposed change?
It's changed, isn't it? If the, the same height, you're doing the, with the 110, 100-foot tower here, and that's, that's what they've been going off of since the beginning. So...
No, I don't have any problems with it, as long as it's acceptable to the board or the current recommendations.
Okay. And Sheriff, as Chair of the Emergency Management Commission, have you heard anything that gives you a question or concern?
No, no, I think we're good.
Okay. Well, this was, I guess, just an update for us?
Well, that's just one of the sites. Okay, yeah. I mean, I think we need to go through each of the sites. That's just, that's just the Justice Center is, that's that site. And I think, Tim, you have the information you need as far as the RFP for that then. But then, Dawn, if you wanna go on to your next site.
Hold on, Megan, before we jump to the next one, how are we doing on that? Now that you have that direction, Tim, do you think we can still hit, we sort of have a self-imposed deadline of 60 days, less, I don't know, 10, 50 days, or whatever it is on that? Are we gonna be okay on the timing for the RFP?
Are you asking me?
Yep.
Eric, I don't think we'll have any, any, any issues with that. The RFP's pretty well ready. We just, I need to know how to handle these couple of sites. And I think we've checked the box on the Justice Center site now.
Agreed.
So, we have the other site. So, what we would do with the Justice Center, in, in terms of the civil RFP, I'll just take it out altogether. Because we won't need a price for that. And that price is identified as Motorola proposal. So, we could, we could take that out. And so, now what to do with the, how many other problem sites do we have? Is it just Greenfield One after that, or are there more?
We've got issues with most of the sites. So, we're gonna go through each one to talk about it. The Greenfield site, Greenfield One, which is the one that's closer to New Virginia, that was all the conservation land. We can't put it on any of those parcels. Doug McCaslin has found a possibility where we can talk with a private landowner. The land that actually is, the, the tower we go on is not owned by the landowner, but it's right next to it. So, we definitely would wanna talk to them. Is that correct, Doug?
Uh, depends on which one you go with. The one that is on the south one, which would probably be the better one to go with, as farther off the road. And that's owned by that homeowner right there.
So, we would wanna talk with that homeowner to see if that will be a possibility to use that site, likely part of the land.
Hey, Doug?
Yes.
Where, where you have the red X below the old road bed, south of the old road bed, could you not be north of the old road bed? It'd be a county rite of late, or?
None of that is county. The county rite of late is right next to the, the new road. It's, the, the, the whole parcel is, is private property.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
So, that would require doing site negotiation with the, the landowner there. The Lacona site, which is Greenfield Four, is set on city property. We also would need to negotiate with the city. And that one would be subject to county zoning. Require special use for men.
Has, has anyone to this point talked with, because I see Norwalk's on here, Lacona's on here, Martinsdale, to some extent, is on here in, not, not New Virginia, that's private property. Any of those city entities yet?
We spoke to the Lacona. And the Martinsdale was either on county property or it'll be the school, both, both of those. The one for Norwalk has not been approached. That they're looking at the city yard for that. We haven't really opened that conversation yet.
I'd happily help with that one.
If you would, yes.
But how was, was Lacona receptive?
Oh, absolutely.
I would hope so.
Absolutely. The mayor was, was very open. He says, yes, they have all that land. It's a matter of sitting down and discussing what it means. They got like 28 years there that is an option next to the little rooms.
We think the Martinsdale site can be worked out as well. I think that that one's gonna be a huge
But Norwalk gives some pause?
Norwalk gives us some pause. But, but we also think we need to go talk to them and see what we can do.
But that was also a conversation that we've been having with Westcom as far as, because now you're gonna have two Essex towers within a mile of each other. So, maybe that's something that, working together, you know, moving their stuff from the water tower and doing a cooperative, improving their coverage along with helping ours. And there's just a lot of things that could be discussed there.
Okay. And then the, the last tower is the, the tower that's owned by Murphy. And that requires a lease for the county to be on that tower. It requires a lease with Murphy. And the lease is not
Right. Have any preliminary numbers been discussed with Murphy about the lease? Or not yet?
In the meetings, there has been, and it's still within, there's kind of a threshold we've been using. It's like the 1,500, and they're under that.
Okay.
So...
On a monthly basis?
Yes. And then that would be part of what, I mean, we're paying for, the 911 Board is paying for radio circuits now for all the for radio circuits now for all the radio towers, so that's part of that. Those are the recurring costs.
That's all the sites, because the last tower is the Essex Tower that's at Hoover.
One back to the Justice Center, one for me. So when we're talking about doing it as a change order, it may go against the RFP, needing to do the RFP for the Civs, because if it's just a change order, it's not going out for bid on that piece of it. So I don't know that that's an option. It may need to be included in that RFP. You know, you were talking about doing it as a change order to include the tower with that, but I think that piece of it, in consulting with County Attorney Icoats, that to is not go against that bidding process on that piece of it, which was the whole point of bidding on the Civs. I think it still needs to be included in Omnicom's RFP that goes out. Does that make sense? Does that make sense, Tim, what I'm saying?
Or you see, I didn't quite catch all that, Megan.
As opposed to doing the tower on the Justice Center as a change order through the Justice Center, but isolating the invoices so that it goes to the correct bonding, that would go against, because then it would not go out for public bid. So it needs to be included in the RFP as a bid piece of it, because that was the whole point of the Civs getting broken out in the first place. So I think it needs, still needs to be included in your RFP for the Civs.
Okay, so do you want it included as it's proposed by Motorola, which is a 100-foot monopole?
No, I want a 55-foot tower on top of our Justice Center, and...
55, okay. Is that 55, or what, the height of that roof?
The building's 55, so the tower would be 55 to get to the 110, correct?
And Tim, I can send you the exact height at the location we think it would be best to be placed and provide you with that. But today, for conceptual purpose today, we're going to say 55 feet.
I think you're, I think you're right, Megan.
So we can do that, we can identify site cost by site, so if you want to strip it out whichever way you think is going to be better.
Yeah, I think it needs to be included. And then, how do your Ancoats agree?
Okay. And for the Norwalk site, are we okay there? I mean, did anybody, has anybody talked to them about perhaps, I don't know whether they would consider a tower near their existing water tank site, which would be good for them and maybe good for the Warren County, but not sure. Doug, have you had conversations with them about...
The only one I've had conversation with is Westcom, and that's the only ones I've had conversations with.
Okay. All right. So for the purposes of our RFP, we'll leave it that part, that site as is, and the Greenfield One site, we could just pick the coordinates of that lower site for now, just put some words in there to the effect that these sites might relocate, but their schedule work essentially is going to remain the same. Of course, I guess, yeah, maybe some work would be different in terms of clearing and soils and anything else, but we don't have soil samples anyway.
Right.
This time.
Okay, does that get, Michael, get you some additional information, but does that get you what you need to be able to send that RFP out? Tim?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm good. We'll send it out like that, and it should go out Monday.
Okay.
Pretty much ready now, but everybody's pretty well left town already at this point.
And Tim, I'll send you an email with the information that you need from us by Monday.
Okay.
Any other cameras?
I believe that's it, unless anybody else has any questions or any follow-up.
Doug, when do you want to go to Norwalk with me? Doug?
Anytime.
I'll call on, I'll call around and see what we can do, maybe early next week.
Could you also take Don?
Yeah.
Maybe we'll do two?
Whoever.
All of them. And I wouldn't mind having like Rob from Westcom and the fire chief and police chief to kind of open up all the options of what this project can do.
Sounds wonderful. Okay. Any other questions? Anyone in the room have any questions about? Okay. It's 2:05, and I've taken, I'll just call 88 adjourned. Thank you.
It's probably like Robin.
All right, thanks everybody.
Thank you, Tim.